We'll call it an order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council Meeting, July the 8th, 2025. The City Council should have the minutes, the Committee of the Whole, from June the 17th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
There's a move.
Motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Board of Zoning Adjustment, Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy, supernumerary position, unexpired term, begins immediately and ends January 20, 2028. Incumbent Mary Thomas Boyd was recently appointed to, as a regular member of the BZA. I would like to nominate Elizabeth Strain.
Second. All right. We have a nomination for Elizabeth Strain. Motion is second. Any comments or discussion? Please go ahead.
Once again, we had a fantastic number of candidates to choose from, very highly qualified people. And I think Ms. Strain will do a very good job. She's a lifelong resident of Auburn and look forward to working with her.
Anyone else? All in favor of Elizabeth Strain for a supernumerary position with the Board of Zoning Adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Auburn Downtown Redevelopment Authority, Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. There are two vacancy terms, begin July 19th, 2025, and end July 18th, 2031. Incumbents Ray Huff have served three full terms, and Marty Mosley has served two full terms. For the Ray Huff slide, I'd like to nominate Haven Duff.
Have a motion and a second for Haven Duff. Any comments or questions, thoughts?
Mayor, I need an abstain from this vote.
Okay, one abstention. Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries with one abstention.
And this seat currently held by Marty Mosley, I would like to nominate Connie Pace.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for Connie Pace. Any comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. And in general, I want to say thank you to everyone that has served, Mr. Huff, Ms. Mosley, for serving on the Auburn Downtown Redevelopment Authority. And I appreciate all of our citizens who took the time to fill out applications for both of these organizations, and encourage you to continue to look for opportunities to serve our community. Council Compensation, Councilman Parsons. Before I turn it over to Mr. Parsons, I just want to make sure our audience that is listening and with us here tonight obviously understands that tonight we will only be having a discussion. The council does have the opportunity to deliberate on this topic. There will be no final decisions made. Ultimately, at the end of the discussion, if the majority of the council would like to ask the staff to move forward with putting this on a future agenda, then we will communicate that to the staff. But tonight is just for discussion. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The public is probably aware of the fact that we've gone into two work sessions on this topic, and I appreciate the work that the city manager and staff put together to provide us with both a background of the history of compensation within the city of Auburn, and some comparisons of Alabama cities to serve as a guide regarding just what type of increase we're proposing, or I'm proposing at this point. The method in which I've undertaken here to come up with an appropriate compensation figure has been through the figures that have been provided to us of other cities, including Big Ten Alabama cities. And those compensations vary significantly just through circumstances and city sizes and so on. But looking at the council salary averaged through these shared cities, it averages out to about $17,122 per year. The Auburn City Council currently receives $7,200. And the last time there has been ever an adjustment to the city council salary was in 2006. So what I would be proposing for the incoming council of 2026, that is a 20-year pause in any kind of increase to salary, I worked from the average of the state, the cities provided to us and the state of Alabama, which is 17,122. And while I like the average, I think traditionally Auburn has leaned to the conservative side of such an average. And I would be proposing that the council members be increased to $15,000 per year, with an exception of the pro tem position, the mayor pro tem position. Currently, the mayor pro tem in this council, we could ballpark that there is an extra time commitment for that role here of at least 20%. So on that figure, I would propose that the mayor pro tem receive $18,000 per year. I want to also let you know that I did a comparison of the Alabama Big Ten cities, of which Auburn is number seven in size. And that average for council salary is $24,240. So we're on the conservative side of that average, my proposal. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain questions or open it out to other members to contribute to the conversation.
Bob, I appreciate your leadership on this and your desire to bring this forward to a conversation. Certainly, again, I want to, Ms. Crouch, I appreciate the staff and all the time that it took to put this information together. As Mr. Parsons stated, this has not been discussed and has not been changed since 2006. In 2006, the population of this city was a little over 50,000. The 2010 census had us about 54,000, I believe. David, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong on that, but I think that's about what it was. And today, you know, I would comfortably stand in front of any group and say that our, you know, our population is around 84,000, 85,000. That's 30,000 more citizens that are living in Auburn, 30,000 more citizens that vote, 30,000 more citizens that have needs. Our student population has increased from 2006 at 24,000 to today. Coming this fall, Auburn will accept a class here in just a matter of weeks of over 34,000, and that doesn't include VCOMs. So really, that number is probably closer to 35,000. And so out of those 30,000 new residents that have come since 2006, 10 of those are students. This city is 64 square miles. It has 747 miles of streets and 191 miles of sidewalks and 14 parks. And we go through 3.3 billion gallons of water, and we collect 17,800 tons of garbage. Those are just a few of the statistics. In 2006, social media was sort of beginning, but it certainly wasn't a primary source of communication as it is today. I've said this from the beginning, and I believe this needed to be evaluated, and I believe the council deserves to be paid more than they're paid now. Their job is more involved, there are more people to see and to talk to. And I know everybody up here's heart's in the right place, and y'all, every one of y'all do an excellent job, and you're very committed to your awards. But there's just more to do now than there used to be. And I believe it's fair to look at paying our council more money. Bob brought up the Big Ten. If you look at the three cities that are below Auburn in the Big Ten, Decatur pays their council 21,000, Dothan pays their council members 21,000, and Madison pays their council members 20,000. We're currently at 7,200. Our sister city next door to us, that I believe their population is probably around 35,000, pays their council over $13,000 a year. So I certainly believe the stats and the data justify Auburn evaluating this and strongly looking at an increase, and I'll certainly be voting for an increase tonight. Encouraging an increase tonight, excuse me, that was the wrong terminology. Anyone else?
I would like to point out that aside from the information that Ron provided with relation to how the city has changed and the way that the roles of council members have changed, if you simply apply an adjusted gross inflation to the council salary of $7200 in 2006 up till today, then you bring an adjusted gross salary of roughly $13,000. So that's not even taking into account some of these, some of these other issues that Ron and Bob have brought up. So based on that, I'm in favor of moving forward to this as well.
Mr. Mayor, is there any kind of mechanism we can put in place that would make sure we don't go 20 more years without kind of considering this again? I know that it's a four-year, every four, and maybe this is a question for the city manager, but you can't look at this but every four years possibly or something, but be every other biennial budget or something that we can at least have a conversation or talk about it as a policy standpoint, maybe it's just a policy that we kind of take...
It's just a suggested policy because you can't compel the next council to review it, but you can strongly suggest, and typically we have crossover. So I think it'd be incumbent upon council members to say we should look at this, whether they want to make a move on it or not. I would say it has come up off and on over this 20-year period, and just depends on whether that's, you know, that's coming up that two council members are having a basic conversation, or if it's come up formally in Committee of the Whole, and it certainly did two council terms ago, or actually, last council term, I'm sorry. It came up and it just did not pass. And so, yeah, and I think it's just intentionality by the council if they want to review it.
Anyone else?
Well, I just want to thank Bob for putting together a proposal. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're looking at future councils, and how big the city has grown, and growth in technology and all this different stuff, and the roles that the council plays, the pro tem, and even the mayor play. So I too would be in favor of the increase and moving forward with it.
Thank you, Connie. You alluded to something that Bob said, and I just want to repeat, this would only come into play for the next council that would be elected next August. And so, once that council is seated in early November of 2026, would this come into play?
If I may just add one more thing that I didn't mention, I was motivated to take this to where we are now for all the reasons that you spoke about now, but one other reason that motivated me is the fact that this increase is some kind of supplemental income for a person who would choose to put their hat in the ring to become an elected official. And I think increasing the compensation perhaps has the added benefit of having other people in our community who might, who might not be in a position financially to take on the role of an elected official, but this may help broaden the applicant pool every election.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Yes, Mayor, I've stated before, I'm not in favor of a pay raise. I respect everyone's opinion and make a compelling argument for it. I can understand that. However, I don't, I take this job very serious. I was born and raised here in Auburn, I'm raising my, raising my daughter here, and the good folks of Auburn gave me a job in the police department for 26 years and elected me three different terms. And ain't much I can do other than give my time and thoughts to the community. I played a big role, I feel like, in keeping this community safe since 1987, and I do it for free. Nothing against you all that want a raise, but I just simply do not, I'm not in favor of one, and I do it for free. I love what Auburn has done for me, and I, it's my pleasure to serve. And the only thing I would say about, if you do it for the money, you're doing it for the wrong reason. None of you up here now are doing it for the money, I know good and way you're not. If you're doing it for the money, if you're doing it for the wrong reason. And I just, I just can't say enough how much I appreciate Auburn, and this is my small way of giving back to the citizens of Auburn.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Chief Dawson. A lot of comparisons to other cities, well, you know, we're not other cities. And frankly, I don't really care what other cities do. You know, I think Auburn is special, and we're unique. And like Chief said, I'd be doing this for free. In fact, I thought it was for free when I first got elected. But I don't really want somebody representing me who is incentivized by money. So I do not think this is necessary at this time.
Anyone else? Council, based on listening to most of you, is the council okay with moving forward, asking the staff to put, would this be a resolution or an ordinance?
Resolution.
Would it be a resolution on a future agenda that would include paying the future payment salary of a council member being 15,000, and the future salary of the mayor pro tem being 18,000? Is the majority of the council good with that?
I thought he said 17 for the council.
15 and 18 is what Bob said.
17 was the average.
17 was the average of the cities.
I'd just like to be on record opposing to move forward with it. Thank you.
All right, I believe we have a majority, so this will appear on an agenda in the future?
Let me clarify a couple of things. Both Councilman Dawson and Councilman Griswold want to be on record as opposed to moving forward with this. So it'd be seven in favor of, is that accurate, everybody? If we're going to reflect it in the record that way, I want to be sure, all of you.
Okay.
Okay. And then next, it's up to you as to a date. You've got a deadline, I think it's long about February, that we have to have this done by February. So it would help to know when you would like to see this on an agenda. We don't have, we have major things going, the budget's not going to get till the first meeting in September. It does help to know, but we can always adjust the budget because it's, we'll adjust it at mid-year, that we don't have to have it in there right now, it's not going to move the needle in terms of that. So it's really when you guys want to take this up on an agenda is to let me know.
I want to be respectful to our community if they need time to understand this, but we've been talking about it for a while.
The agenda item would be very simple, it's just a resolution setting the salary at the amounts you have suggested thus far. However, you have the right that night to amend the resolution, to do whatever you wish. I mean, that's, that's kind of what happened last time. And so it's whatever you want to do, whenever you want to do it. And if you want to wait till we get into the next fiscal year, we can do that too, just whatever you feel like.
I would suggest we just go ahead and move forward. We either do it in two weeks or do it at the first meeting in August.
You guys tell me.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a legal advertising requirement we need to do? Can we just do it at the next meeting?
No such thing, yeah, you can. I can put it on the next meeting, if you're not ready, you can postpone it. I mean, that's fine. We'll just roll into that, it's a simple resolution.
Okay.
It'll be 15,000 per year for city council members, and for whoever the mayor pro tem is, is 18,000. Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for their time on that. Again, thank you to the staff. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Okay, city manager, anything for us?
No, sir.
All right, is there a move to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
Yes, I'm moved.
All right, Committee of the Whole is adjourned, it's 5:49, we'll get started right We'll call it an order tonight's Auburn City Council Meeting for July the 8th, 2025. Welcome, all of you that have joined us here in council chambers, as well as those who are listening on WA&amp;I, our streaming services. With roll call, Lindsay?
Adams.
Here.
Obleyn.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, I just want to say to Tommy how sorry we are about the loss of your father, and certainly from my perspective, you've been in my thoughts and prayers, as well as your whole family here over the last week or two, and I know that's a big loss for you. Okay. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. This is the first meeting of the month, and so at this time, we'll recognize our Employee of the Month, as well as other outstanding employees.
We want to pause while we get some audio figured out.
Craig's not turning red.
Yeah, I'll get the chief to look out.
We're pleased to recognize our July Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Allison Edge, our Finance Director, and Latrice Mose, our Revenue Manager. Cheryl Van Tyel has been with the city's Finance Department since April of 2005. As a Senior Revenue Officer, Cheryl is responsible for the assessment and collection of city taxes and other revenues. Some of Cheryl's responsibilities include analysis of the city's taxpayer database for compliance, implementation of state laws and regulations, educating taxpayers on the city's tax and licensing regulations, and more. As the Revenue Office began preparations last year for the business license renewal season, two of the three Revenue Officer positions became vacant. As the Revenue Manager juggled and reassigned job duties, Cheryl stepped in to ensure all critical tasks were handled. Cheryl worked tirelessly each workday and after normal work hours to fill the gap, ensuring taxpayers were not affected by the challenges in the office. Once the two vacant positions were filled, Cheryl helped develop a training plan to prepare the new officers for the licensing renewal period. She also collaborated with management and other city staff on the most effective ways to address several delinquent accounts. She implemented additional collection strategies that resulted in the collection of delinquent revenue that had been passed to you for quite some time. Enforcement of regulations is not easy, especially when it's related to tax assessment and collection. Cheryl's commitment to provide an outstanding customer service and her extensive knowledge of all city and state licensing and taxation rules and regulations make her an incredibly valuable team member of the city of Auburn. The city's core values of integrity, reliability, fairness, and professional excellence are inspected of every employee, and Cheryl regularly displays these values. She cares about the city, its citizens, and taxpayers, and I'm proud to recognize her as the July Employee of the Month. Congratulations, and we thank you.
Thank you to Cheryl for being recognized our Employee of the Month, and congratulations to you, and all the best to Norman Pitts and Matt Jordan as they move forward in retirement, and thank you for your service to our community. During the Committee of the Whole, the city council appointed Elizabeth Strain to a supernumerary position with the BZA. The city council also appointed Haven Duff and Connie Pace to the Auburn Downtown Redevelopment Authority. The city council also had a discussion about council compensation that Councilman Parsons led and began, and ultimately, the city council has asked the staff to put together a resolution that would include compensating the city council at $15,000 a year, and the mayor pro tem at $18,000 a year. We have targeted July the 22nd potentially to hear that for the first time, and I remind everyone that this would not go into effect until the next council is elected and seated, which would be in November of 2026. A couple of announcements, I want to say thank you to the massive effort it takes on behalf of the city and our citizens to put together the Auburn Fireworks Show each July the 4th. My wife decided to sit this one out this year, and so I rode around, and it was amazing to me, the different places and locations that people were taking in our fireworks. Certainly, we are grateful for the commercial parking lots that were utilized, the church parking lots that were utilized, neighborhood roads that were utilized, just a massive effort from Public Safety, and I know Parks and Rec, and I'm sure Public Works in addition. So I just thank everybody for doing that. It was certainly seemed to be enjoyed by those that came and watched our fireworks the other night, so thank you. I want to say thank you to Allison Blinkenship for bringing the Citizens Academy members by recently to visit. I always enjoy visiting with that group of people, and again, I want to thank them for wanting to know more about this city and giving up time during the year to learn more about how Auburn works. I also want to remind our community that the Neighborhood Conference is Saturday, August the 16th. There's information on the city's website that you can access for that. And I want to remind everyone also that Cheers on the Corner will be happening a week from this Friday downtown, and please go downtown and enjoy yourself, and support those businesses and restaurants that will be there in downtown Auburn. It's always a fun evening. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to give a big shout out to the Juneteenth celebration this year at Kisa Park, and I want to thank Parks and Recreation for always allowing us to use the park. And I would like to thank everyone who actually, we had a lot of donations this year, so I don't want to name everybody, but you know, if you were a part of the celebration and you made a donation, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to thank you again, Mayor Anders, for coming out and doing another proclamation. And thank you, Bob, for showing up and always being a part of, and that just my thank yous.
Well, thank you, Connie, for your leadership, too. We appreciate it. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
I'd like to thank the Auburn Fire Department for, back on June 20th, my dad, found my dad unresponsive, and they came out, as usual, did a tremendous job getting him up, getting transported to East Alabama Medical Center. But unfortunately, Dad didn't want to come back home, he went on to have him, and he's doing much better than I'm doing today, I can tell you that. But just to let you know, Auburn lost a great man last week, two weeks ago now, almost. He died on Saturday, the 21st. My dad had Parkinson's, too, and it brought us much closer together, so that I think that the devil thought he was getting away with one, but if I hadn't got Parkinson's, I'd still be working at the police department right now, and it slowed me down a lot, and it slowed him down a lot. So we spent most of our time on my front porch, talking about life, and talking about my grandchildren, his great-grandchildren, and I got real, I got very close to my dad during that time. And I thank the Lord for it. The city of Auburn is much safer because of him, because I had a nice, successful career in law enforcement, made some cases that nobody knew how I could make a case like that, and those things that looked impossible to do. But it wasn't because of me, it was because of my dad at home, offering up prayers for his son. One example was on March the 4th, 2008, we got a call, a young lady lying in the middle of 147. I called my dad, said, "Dad, I don't know what I got over here, but I need some prayers." And three days later, her murderer was brought into custody. And I would always have him praying at certain times, when I had a big court case, I had my dad praying at the time I thought I'd be on the witness stand, and I always was very successful because of his prayers. So it may not be special to you, but it's special to me, because he's my dad, my best friend, my pastor, my mentor. You know, a lot of kids grow up admiring people they see on television, I grew up admiring my dad, and I wanted to be just like him, but unfortunately, I wasn't, I wasn't dedicated enough to do what he did. He was a pastor for many years. But he will be missed by us, but I know where he's at, and I think the Lord looked down on him. We'd struggle so much for Parkinson's, I had to help him get from the door to the truck every Sunday and Wednesday night, go to church. And I couldn't get around good, but neither one of us could, but he beat me on this one. He's been healed, he has the ultimate healing, he went home to be with Christ our Savior. And I just can't say enough good about him. And I thank all of you for your support during this time, all you reaching out with your comments and your texts and everything coming by, the visitation... And I thank all of you for your support during this time, all you reaching out with your comments and your texts and everything coming by, the visitation and funeral. It meant so much to him, and it would have meant a lot to him. He would have really been happy about that. He loved the people of Auburn, so thank you for indulging me in letting me speak on him now.
Anyone else? I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about the scramble that happened yesterday. Only in our community can we celebrate crossing the street, but we did it with style and pizzazz yesterday, and I appreciate all the work from Brandy and our public affairs staff and our police and everybody else that participated. And if I left you out, please don't take it personal, but I just thought it was fun, and it was appropriate, and it was quick, and it was purposeful, and people were using it. I was over there this afternoon as they were getting ready to try to set a world record for rolling tumors, and people were actively going back and forth across the street that way. So anyway, thank you to all the people that studied that way of getting pedestrians in and around our community, and let's just hope over the next 30 days it goes well for us as we approach football season and back to school. All right, anyone else?
If I may add one thing.
Please.
Don't look for the old man on Cox Road with the long stick and straw hat walking anymore, waving to everybody he sees. He's gone on to heaven.
All right, at this time, we'll have Auburn University Communications.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tony Hasso. I'm currently serving as an engineering senator for Auburn University Student Government Association. I'm here to give the report for Auburn University Student Government Association. Today at 5:00 PM, an event was hosted by Eli Manning at Tumors Corner. He has a show called Eli's Places that he does for ESPN+ where he features college campuses and their unique traditions. Manning chose to feature the iconic rolling of Tumors Corner in one of his episodes. And the Auburn student newspaper, called the Auburn Plainsman, released its Best Campus Plainsman's Choice Awards for 2025. The staff favorite tradition was swag surf, and the favorite on-campus dining was Hay Day Market, and the favorite student event was the annual tip-off at Tumors, which marked the beginning of the basketball season. And Auburn Athletics is officially switching from Under Armour to Nike. This agreement is for 10 years. Thank you guys so much, and War Eagle.
Thank you, thank you. I think Sonny was just telling me he loves to swag surf. Is that what you were telling me, Sonny, that was your favorite tradition? You agreed with him as well? All right, at this time, we'll have citizens communications on items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to talk to the city council about anything on the upcoming agenda, this would be your opportunity to do that. You have five minutes. We asked you to give us your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move ahead with city managers' communications.
Mayor, do you not have any city managers' communications this evening?
Let's go to the consent agenda then.
Our first item of business is a consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Two items, if I may. Item 8 Charlie 3 and 8 Charlie 4.
Anyone else? Okay, 8 C 3.
Item 8 C 3 authorizes an agreement with Flash Parking Incorporated for parking access and revenue control system hardware and software for the Wright Street Parking Deck in the amount of $147,267.60. The initial contract term is for one year with an option to renew for two additional one-year terms.
May I have approval?
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, sir. The council and staff have spent a lot of time on this and the next item, but I wanted to bring it back up tonight because it is a big item, and it's not very glamorous, it's not very simple. And we're, I'm sure, all kind of tired of it, but I don't think the citizens have had a lot of the benefit of the back and forth on this, so I thought maybe another question or two for the benefit of those who weren't able to attend our sessions. As I understand it, and as I say, it's not a simple issue, we're asking for a new contractor. The old contractor is WPS Parking Solutions, and the new contractor proposed is Flash Parking. And they both, we currently use a system, a hardware and a software system called PARCS, P-A-R-C-S. And that system is also being proposed by the new contractor. Is that correct so far?
Not entirely.
Okay.
I'll have Dan clarify real quickly.
Generally speaking, so PARCS is just an acronym for Parking Access Revenue Control System. So that's just for the general name for that type of application. But WPS is our current vendor for the hardware and software for the access control component. Anchor is our current vendor for servicing the park system equipment.
So what we're really proposing is to just switch that vendor in this first item, just switching equipment to different equipment, different kiosks, that kind of thing.
That's what I wanted to make clear, that we're switching to new equipment, even though I had the nomenclature.
Right, with new software.
With new software.
Correct, new hardware, new software.
And new vendor.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think that's really the only question that was important to me. There may be others tonight from other people, but thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold. We'll come right to you. Go ahead, Kelly. No, you got it.
Okay. I have a city manager about the response time, and you referenced Section 5. I can't find anything about what the response time is if we have an issue in terms of Flash responding to our software issues.
So software issues are fully detailed in the agreement, as I emailed you. That has a response time for software, yeah. If they do not respond, they have to, in certain time period, they have to refund some of our monthly money, as outlined in the agreement. And so that's on the software side for it being down and specifically called out. On the hardware side, there isn't a specific response time, other than a two-year warranty where they have to replace items. LAS, which is another agenda item, reports that it takes four to six hours usually to get parts, and they come out of Atlanta, and then sometimes up to 24 hours.
Okay.
So the service level commitment in Section 5, Number 2, talks about software is supposed to be uninterrupted, but if you read on down, it says downtime shall exist and be measured beginning when there's a problem in the system, and it says they'll have to refund money if they don't respond, is basically and generally what it says. That's on the software side, not the hardware side.
Yeah, I saw that, but still didn't answer the question about what is their response time?
Because it's not in the contract. All that's in the contract is this, which is if things are down for periods of time, we get a refund. I'm not following.
So it would be to their benefit to respond and have it working properly within that timeframe?
It talks about downtime, and when it's down for certain periods of time, not routine maintenance and so on, we can request, you know, a fee credit equal to amount of 5% of our normal monthly fees, et cetera. And we have the right then to cancel contracts and so on.
Okay, all right, thanks. And the other question I had was the payment of $147,000 and change upfront, that's for hardware and software, and then on top of that, it's a $600 a month licensing fee. Is that right?
It's mainly just for, it's hardware and an overall license for the software, but mainly hardware, Dan.
Correct. It's hardware and the installation, and then it's coordination between the parties on getting.
Systems, really the software isn't a $600 a month.
But there is a $600, $600 a month.
If that's for hardware, why are we paying the same amount on the two options? Both options are also for $147,000, so surely, hopefully, we would have some hardware already in place, not have to go out and buy it again and again.
What are you referring to in the two options?
I'm talking about the two options that are referred, the, we have the option to renew the contract, right?
Renewing the contract would be.
The option to renew for two additional years.
Right, that would be for the $600 a month fee, not the rest of it. We're not paying $147,000 again and again and again.
Okay, correct.
Yeah, the $147,000 is a one-time, well, split over payments percentage at ordering, 50%, 40% at delivery, and then 10% we pay when, upon it working and being functional.
Okay.
And then the $600 a month thereafter.
Okay, good.
And again, kind of as discussed.
That wasn't clear, because it just said the initial contract, whatever, so.
So as discussed in your meeting, is, I'm under the impression that should you adopt this tonight, we'll have a discussion about this before we would move forward and proceed with any renewals.
Okay, so the renewals, if we do it, would only be for the $600 a month?
Yes, sir, for this one.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Parsons?
Yeah, I just wanted to, for the benefit of the public, if you could just give us the backstory of why the previous vendor is problematic and that we're moving to this proposal.
Well, ultimately, we opened the deck in 2021, late July, is that correct? Early August? And so we're four years in, we're having multiple equipment failures, you know, people do break the gates and so on, that happens. We do charge them for that if we can catch them. But we're also having a lot of failures in the kiosk equipment, particularly the exit gate kiosk equipment, and we have some people who they love, we're getting over 4,000 calls a year to our public safety non-emergency personnel to let folks out of the parking garage, and some people have learned at certain times of night, if our folks are busy taking 911 calls, that they'll just let them out of the deck. And so we're trying to capture more of our revenue and get better working equipment. And so at the end of the day, not our desire to replace equipment, but if it's not functioning properly, we've got some paper flex and other things in these machines that are causing them to malfunction. We cannot get the vendor here quick enough to service them, and we are then letting people park for free on a regular basis. And so we're trying to curb that. We want them to use the parking garage, but we also want them to pay their fair share.
Thank you.
And won't this additional, this upgraded hardware allow us to now communicate and utilize Park Mobile, which is an app that we're currently using?
Yes, that's correct, and it has other things, and I also had a good question from Councilman Adams. It just has some flexibility, like right now you have to pull a ticket under this scenario to get in, but he asked a good question about, you know, you've got paper tickets, if those are causing the problem, are they going to continue to cause it? There's other ways we can allow you to get into the parking deck, but scanning a QR code on your way in or punching your phone number in might not be an ideal situation in the moment for people to be used to it. But this equipment can be converted to do those things, kind of come set up that way, and that's an option we have in the future.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right, 8, 3, 4.
Item 8 C 4 authorizes a management services agreement with LAS Parking Georgia LLC for the Wright Street Parking Deck in the amount of $8,000 per month, and a non-guaranteed annual incentive fee equal to 10% of the current year gross parking revenue less the base revenue threshold of $535,000. The initial contract term is for one year with an option to renew for two additional one-year terms. Contract also has a 3% annual escalation fee.
May I have approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd like to point out that the last item was a replacement of a capability and service that we already had, that we already provided, that we already contracted for. This is a new item. This item seeks to remedy the problems that the city manager just pointed out that we're missing. It's hard to quantify, but a great deal of revenue, and so this seeks to capture that revenue, and it seeks to do so in a way that uses outside resources. But these outside resources have been used in the local area and have been tried by Auburn Bank, as I understand it, and have been found to be very beneficial for them. And so I'd like to ask you a couple of questions on that, if I may, just to sharpen my thinking on that. This company that's proposed to provide the additional resources is named LAS. And if, I think I know these answers, but I want to ask them anyway, does LAS replace broken parts?
Dan?
Yes, they will be responsible for maintaining the hardware and software system that is going to be installed.
Okay.
Correct.
Would we pay for those parts, or would LAS pay for the parts?
So during, there's a 24-month warranty on the previous council item, the flash hardware and software, and that's a limited warranty, but it's only limited such that they don't cover issues associated with vandalism, misuse, et cetera. But otherwise, parts are covered for 24 months.
But then we would cover the cost of the parts beyond that, including vandalism. So if somebody breaks a gate, that's going to be on us, but LAS will replace it and then bill us accordingly for the actual cost of the part.
Correct, and we would coordinate to keep inventory in stock of the parts that, yeah, need to be replaced. It's in the previous packet called a care kit.
And it's usually obvious when it's vandalism versus an accident.
The cameras tell us so. We have got over 350 views on the Wright Street Parking Deck. We can usually tell exactly what happened.
And does LAS reboot and respond to calls?
They do.
And rebooting may not be something that the citizens know about, so.
Well, rebooting means that the previous system or the current one installed is having issues, and we'd have to reboot it to get it to sometimes reset itself. LAS will be responsible for all that things you see in your council packet, including certain response times during an average business day versus in the middle of the night. They've got X amount of time to troubleshoot. The goal here was to keep the 4,000 calls coming to our non-emergency number for people that are having a water main break, they've had an accident, they need the police somewhere, and keep those lines open. However, I have no reports of LAS not responding to calls, and their number will be on everything, but the non-emergency number will still be available as a backup, and our folks still could access it. The goal of LAS in general was what we would spend in a year here is, got to be a savings compared to what we're spending in staff time today. They're also managing game day parking, which we're having to pull three, four finance staff members multiple hours on a game day because of financial controls. They're doing a lot of the troubleshooting, and they're in the parking business, which the city is not in the parking management business. We provide parking, but we're not in the parking management business. They are.
Just to recap that, we're already spending money on labor, but on top of that, we're losing revenue, which we hope to recapture.
That's a perfect recap.
And they physically, when it says respond to calls, they physically respond. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so they show up on-site and they deal with the broken machine or the broken gate or whatever it is?
They do. They're supposed to address any issues with that parking access and revenue control system.
And as I said, there is already a LAS office in town.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, well, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Again, counsel, I would just say one caveat with this, too, is crystal clear from your work session, if you're interested in adopting this tonight, that we'll still revisit both contracts before they would renew.
Mr. Griswold?
You mentioned the care kit provided by the previous agenda item. Where is that stockpiled or located within the city?
We would keep it on-site, so we have a storage room at the Wright Street Parking Deck on the lower level.
That they'll have access to.
Okay, and if LAS is not approved, then the city employees would take advantage of that kit to do whatever needed to be done, if they could?
We would. You would have to train city staff to basically do the same, yeah, same maintenance of the park system.
Like they've been doing already.
To a limited degree, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if we use components of the care kit, does Flash replenish the care kit?
We'll have to order replacements.
Yeah, we'd have to reorder.
Okay, all right, thank you. And this is $8,000 a month, right?
Correct.
From a customer, I'm talking.
No, you go ahead.
From a customer service standpoint, I'm there in town already. We've received good reviews on their service of the existing deck they manage. I mean, no problems with customers.
No problems. We also checked their references from other cities in the Atlanta metro area in particular. A lot of references they gave, and the cities have been satisfied with the services they've provided. I mean, we're looking for a solution here that would be the least problematic as possible and provide the best service. We want people to use this parking, but we also want to capture our revenue. And I think you saw this in things, but remember that what we're paying for all this is still more than covered by the Wright Street Parking Deck revenue generated. However, I'll always say there's debt service on the parking garage, and that was never meant to be covered by user fees. This is part of the infrastructure of downtown of which the city provides, but providing it free, obviously, it costs us a lot of money to operate it, is not an option. I mean, it is if you say so, but you know what I mean.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is passed. All right, ordinances.
Item 9A is a request to rezone approximately 10.1 acres of property located on the west side of Wrightsmill Road, just south of Interstate 85 from rural. side of Wrightsmill Road, just south of Interstate 85 from Merle to Development District Housing. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its May 8th meeting. This is the second reading of this item, a motion is needed, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
We don't need unanimous consent, just a motion, sorry.
All right, just.
Yep.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion in second. At this time, um, do we have discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and have discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a few questions before we open the public hearing. I don't know, there's a representative from the developer here, I do have a couple of questions, it is. Typically, on a rezoning, we get a, uh, some type of, uh, site plan or a, a proposal before, so I didn't see that in this particular rezoning request, so I wanted to ask what is being proposed here, uh, at, at this site.
Yeah, we're proposing 21 single-family detached lots in a new public street, taking access off of Wrightsmill Road.
Okay, and then, as far as the proposed entry to that neighborhood, are you, are you have one entry, or are you proposing?
Yeah, just one.
What's the layout kind of look like from that perspective?
All the lots would have internal, would have direct access off of the internal streets, we would only have the public street that would access Wrightsmill Road. Wrightsmill Road is a, is a arterial and, uh, has restricted curb cut spacing, and we're trying to, we're trying to buffer this development from, um, from Wrightsmill Road.
Okay, so, you're not proposing any additional curb cuts, but I guess possibly could be asked if, if needed or something for some reason?
Typically, in this, when we would submit for preliminary plat for the new public street, um, in this type of situation, typically, staff would, would add, make us add a plat that no new curb cuts could be added to Wrightsmill Road. That's, that's typical, uh, in this type of situation on, uh, uh, road classification of Wrightsmill.
Okay. I, I guess my concerns with it, it really, there's really nothing here to commit the developer to this particular style of development, a 21-lot residential development, and you're on a, a, a major collector arterial road, which is, uh, what Wrightsmill Road is, 45 miles per hour. I understand it's not probably typical to ask for additional curb cuts, but that's something that could be there, so to me, it could create a safety issue, uh, with additional curb cuts coming down a, a very busy, a somewhat busy road at 45 miles per hour downhill. I think that's, you know, a little bit of safety, so I, I just have some safety concerns on, on that, and, and I really, uh, prefer to see if the developer would be interested in, in applying a PDD overlay on this, a planned development district overlay on this project, uh, you know, for the future, if that's a possibility from, from you guys' perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're willing to, to do that, um, as long as, you know, I mean, you know, in regards, it would kind of restart our timeframe, right? We would, if, if we had to go through the PDD route, we would have to submit this month, it'd go to Planning Commission in August, maybe back before you in September, so we would, we would need to then postpone this to the second meeting in September to allow the PDD to catch up, so you could do them together at the both, at the same time.
Could we, city manager, could we run the, the DRT kind of concurrently with the possibility
We can, if the applicant is willing to, you know, to continue with design and so on, I'll absolutely make sure the staff's willing to accept full application as if the DDH is moving forward, but with a PDD overlay, um, to review it that way, that's not a problem from our end. Um, the PDD does give you the ability to condition, whereas, you know, about curb cuts, similar to what you'd get in a plat, but it's the only thing, the city council's never going to see the plat until you're accepting right of way much later, um, and this gives you that ability to put that in there and lock down the plan at a density level that you don't have if you just approved the zoning by itself.
Okay.
If the developer is willing to entertain that, we can definitely work through DRT if they're also willing to continue to spend money to, to go down that process without you guys having fully approved it.
If the, if developer's willing to consider that PDD, I, I'd like to motion to postpone this item to date certain, September 16th, uh, so that we can, uh, consider both the rezoning of this to DDH along with the PDD overlay at that time.
Okay.
Now, take your public hearing with it.
Yes.
With a public hearing.
Correct.
All right.
Second.
Do we have a second? Have a motion in second to postpone until the second meeting in September, which is the 16th.
I have a comment and question. That so, if we are considering DDH, regardless if there's a PDD, if this develop, if this property owner were to sell the land, it would then be still zoned DDH, and the new owner could come in and build up the density of five and a half acres a unit.
If they got conditionally use approval, if they went on a performance mode, they could, but if the PDD comes through, they cannot. The PDD runs with the land.
It does run with the land.
It follows the land.
Okay.
Correct, so that's.
Based on density, not the layout.
All density, everything that's outlined in the PDD, they've got to live with it as is. We've, we've had bankruptcies, we've had all kinds of things, and the, whoever then owns it has to comply with the plan. We can't change also development regulations on them, this is a guarantee for whatever it is, and they can't change on us without it, them applying for it and you agreeing to it.
Yeah, we, we, technically, we could only reduce density, if we, if the PDD got approved and it would run with the land, we could only reduce density, but we would be bound by the site layout, as long as we were in, within justices' purview of similar layout, then, then you would, you know what I mean? We could make small tweaks, but.
Yeah, I've seen small tweaks, and small tweaks make big differences, come to Ward Three, Farmville Lakes, um, so, yeah.
But this would be, but we would only be going for single-family detached here, so.
Yeah, no other mixed-use provision, nothing like that.
There's no other mixed-use provision.
Just want to make sure there's an assurance that if it were to change hands, that the DDH density with the PDD remains what's.
Well, you have the right to condition pretty specifically, I think what Mr. Basquins is getting at is sometimes they have to shift a lot line slightly and so on, but they can't flip the layout, and this instance, if we say in a PDD, you're not taking access from Wrightsmill Road from any of these lots, then beyond it being on the plat, which it'll end up on there, too, that's part of the zoning, and that just won't happen. So, it's the only tool the council has, and I think some of you've asked me questions, once you've actually rezoned something without a PDD overlay, a property owner has the right to do or apply for whatever they wish within that zone. The PDD overlay actually restricts it, once they've gotten approval for something, that's what they can build, otherwise, you have to approve changes to it, but you also can't change it on them, it's, it's a two-way street.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in second.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Crouch, do we need to do this with a roll call vote or just a voice vote?
You're fine on a, on a voice vote, because you're not actually, it's not a final action on this item.
Postpone this until September the 16th, and the public hearing will occur that evening, okay? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, resolutions.
Item 10A authorizes a tax abatement for SCA Inc., located at 764 West Veterans Boulevard for the acquisition, acquisition of new equipment. The company plans to invest approximately $19.6 million and anticipates hiring 13 new employees.
Move for approval, second.
Have a motion in second, any discussion? Congratulations to our team for another expansion in our community. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes a warrant purchase agreement to designate the Frasier Lanier Company Incorporated as underwriter for the Series 2025 warrants.
Need for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in second, any questions or discussion?
I have one question, if I may. Is this resolution so that Frasier can act as our agent for the sale of bonds and exercise judgment in the timing of, of the market?
I'll have Allison speak a little more eloquently to that than me, yes.
It more allows us to enter the market when we get ready, we work with the underwriter to do that, but if we, if we don't have this, this approved, then we, we can only go to market on the day of a council meeting. As soon as those warrants or bonds are sold, then we have to sign, we have to have the mayor or the city manager sign a purchase agreement that day, there's a timeline for it, and so, we have to have the authorization to do that, otherwise, we have to go into the market on a council meeting day.
I see, thank you.
Yeah, so that limits our flexibility in making a decision, that it's not a good day to do that.
And let's be very clear, it doesn't matter if we're in a market in a time period and we're not comfortable with where the market is, we're not moving forward.
Right.
Right.
That's it, me.
Good question, Sunny. Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum, this is your opportunity to talk to the council about anything that you would like, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to speak to the council, and we'd ask that you address your comments to the council.
Robert Wilkins, 261 Dedson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, mayor and council. We, the people, America, the land of the free and home of the brave, just celebrated our 249th year of independence on July the 4th. This past June the 14th, America celebrated the U.S. Army's 250th, uh, year anniversary with an incredible military parade. Councilman Griswold stated, there is no 1776 without 1775, so true, councilman, uh, but on the same day, our American freedoms allowed other organized, um, rallies and demonstrations of no kings. Throughout this country, even 12 cities in Alabama, including the city of Auburn, with an estimated thousand of participants, but there is no king in America because of what happened 250 years ago, just a president was duly elected by the majority of the American people. If we had a king, there would be no elections, no Congress, no Supreme Court, but since there is no king in America, we have freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, freedom of the press, and freedom of religion. I'm happy to be an American citizen. The future of Auburn is not the population growth or the increased revenue, but the future is integrating all Auburn citizens by involving them in the future of Auburn. Many come from other parts of Alabama, the nation, and even other parts of the world, while having various talents, skills, and backgrounds. We are fortunate to have a good police and fire department, a good park and recreation, good education, good library, and good economic development while improving our roads, but we can never be financially wasteful or complacent. Do not try to do everything yourself as a council member or as a city staff, listen to citizens like me, who may frustrate you to no ends. Is that right, Councilman Dawson? Look for the positive, if people want to help, figure a way to utilize their skills that will improve Auburn. Be open-minded, do not let your, uh, pride stop from you being what is best for Auburn. Are you, as a council member, the missing link in making Auburn unique and special? Or are your efforts just to follow the same path that past council members and staff have followed? Does Auburn make you smile when you hear her name? We're all different, but great leaders learn to utilize that difference. You, as council members, do not be average, be great. I'm proud to be an American. I hope y'all had a great Fourth of July.
Who will be next?
Susan Bolt, 1188 East University Drive. I want to begin tonight by asking you to consider a proposal specifically regarding dogs. Dogs can be a nuisance, they bark at all hours, disturbing neighbors who are trying to sleep and relax, they create trash, pooping in yards, on sidewalks, sometimes dragging garbage into the street, and regarding safety, dogs can be unpredictable, they might run into traffic, attack other animals, or even injure a child. These are real concerns, and we've all witnessed or experienced this at some point. What if we introduce an ordinance to ban dog ownership in residential neighborhoods? After hearing the problems dogs cause, wouldn't it make sense to restrict dog ownership to just certain parts of the city? Only allow them in select neighborhoods? Maybe we could draw a map, carve out zones where dogs are banned completely. After all, shouldn't we protect neighbors from noise, trash, and unpredictable behavior? Of course not, that would be outrageous, and people would vehemently push back, and rightfully so. Dog ownership is a normal part of life, and most pet owners are responsible. When there are problems, we don't punish everyone, we enforce existing rules to deal with the individual issue. Now, let me bring this full circle. This city and the STR5 has already done exactly that with short-term rentals. Ordinance 3288 drew arbitrary lines through neighborhoods, banning short-term rentals in some areas while allowing them in others, and the reasons used to justify that ordinance? Noise, trash, unpredictable outsiders, the same arguments I just made rhetorically about banning dogs. Let me be clear, I'm not advocating for banning dogs and pets, I'm simply holding up a mirror to your own logic. Most people would find it ridiculous to limit pet ownership in only parts of the city, yet that's exactly the same logic being used to strip homeowners of their rights when it comes to short-term rentals. Short-term rental guests are not inherently disruptive or dangerous, and certainly not more unpredictable than an unleashed dog. The reality is, most short-term rental owners and their guests follow the rules, and when some, someone doesn't, that's why we have nuisance ordinance, ordinances, noise codes, and law enforcement. Ordinance 3288 was built on fear and speculation, it imposed unequal rules on neighbors who live just feet apart. This is not about dogs or short-term rentals, it's about fairness, government overreach, constitutional property rights, and applying the law equally to all property owners. Tonight, I challenge you to rescind 3288. If you wouldn't accept a law that bans dog ownership on one side of the street while allowing it on the other, then you cannot in good conscience and judgment allow the same kind of patchwork ban on short-term rentals. Rescind 3288.
Who will be next? Okay, council, anyone else have anything?